So, welcome. My name is Bobby Barnett. I'm a lifelong New Yorker and affordable housing advocate, and I'm very happy to be hosting this discussion on behalf of Open New York and the endorsement committee and its membership. We've got some very thoughtful city council candidates running here tonight. I've got some big ideas about how to build a more affordable and inclusive city, so I'm very excited to be having this conversation. And despite, you know, the state of the world, the state of our country, I'm excited to be here and to be talking about these issues. I think that local policy, particularly surrounding land use, is fascinating, doesn't always divide neatly on progressive and conservative lines. And so, good ideas can be a powerful force for uniting people despite our different, you know, political differences. So, very, very excited to have this conversation at this time. I hope it'll be very powerful. We have questions we'll get into, but before we do that, we have four candidates. I'll run you through the districts that they're running in, and then I'll let them introduce themselves in the order that we will introduce our candidates this evening. We have first, Shawna Bray, who's running for Council District 7. That includes Washington Heights, Hamilton Heights, Manhattanville, Morningside Heights, Manhattan Valley, and parts of the Upper West Side. We're also joined tonight by Althea Stevens, running in Bronx Council District 16. That includes Claremont, Concourse Village, High Bridge, Morris Heights, Mount Eden, and Morseria. Jessica Haller is also here with us tonight. She is running in Council District 11 in the Bronx. That includes Bedford Park, Kingsbridge, Riverdale, Norwood, Van Cortlandt Village, Wakefield, and Woodlawn. And the fourth candidate that we have with us this evening is Sarah Lynn. She is running in Manhattan's Council District 6. This includes Hell's Kitchen, Columbus Circle, Riverside Park, the Upper West Side, and Central Park. I'm going to give all of the candidates a little bit of time to introduce themselves, kind of let you know the state of their race, let them know what they're all about, and we'll start it off with Shawna.
Open New York, thank you so much for hosting me this evening. Our country is going through some difficult times, and to have you here with us despite what's going on means a lot to me. I'm Shawna Bray, and I'm running to represent the place I've known my whole life, made up of working-class families whose experiences I largely share to fight for stable housing, job and food security, and after-school programs. I am the son of Dominican immigrants, and I grew up on 161st Street in Washington Heights. I went from being evicted as a child to becoming a tenants' rights attorney, helping defend families like mine in housing court facing housing insecurity. I went from being held back in the 4th grade to graduating from Columbia University and touring law school. These experiences were only made possible because of opportunity. After our family's eviction in Washington Heights, my mother landed a job at Zbars as a clerk in the Upper West Side, and my father, a proud 32BJ member, as a janitor at the Port Authority. This all culminated in my family moving to the Upper West Side, for which we are eternally grateful. But the truth is, is that working-class families are struggling in the same ways my family did. But the opportunities that helped us are hardly accessible to families today. Many families, more than ever before amid this pandemic, are experiencing severe housing insecurity and facing an avalanche of eviction. This is why, as a future council member, I look forward to championing free legal services for families facing eviction. I would also create affordable housing through growth and creating density in wealthy, high-opportunity neighborhoods like the Upper West Side and other places. I think that this is going to be critical for all neighborhoods to really do their fair share. For so many years, poor, poor communities of color in particular have had to deal with the impact of rezonings. And it's time that everybody bears theirs, does their fair share to make sure we make affordable housing available to everybody. And briefly, I'll say that we are optimistic about our viability and where our race is headed. We expect January to be a big, big month for us, and I will make sure to keep you updated on those developments. And I look forward to discussing our policies further with you this evening. Very excited to be joined with this exceptional panelist and to be joined by Open New York.
Thank you so much, Shawna. The next speaker, if we could have Althea go, please?
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you, guys, for having me. I'm very excited about being here. Thank you, Shawna, and excited about all the things you just talked about. And so, what's interesting is, my connection to Shawna is, I actually grew up in the district that he is running for. My parents actually still live there, and it's interesting because they said Hamilton Heights, but that's Harlem, right? You know, they changed the name, but it's still Harlem, and we used to call it, well, we still call it Sugar Hill. And I just need to honor that. So, I don't call it Hamilton Heights. I grew up in Harlem. I lived there most of my life. My parents still live in that district. They live on 151st. I went to school at PS 153. I went to school at IS 90 on 168 for my middle school. So, I have strong ties to that district, and I'm still there all the time. But I did end up moving to the Bronx because I've worked in the Bronx for the last 15 years, and I moved to the Bronx. And one of the reasons I moved here, because I got an opportunity to move into a newer building, rent stabilize, and all those things. And the building that I was in was a tenement. So, I moved to the Bronx, and I've been here for the last 10 years. And I'm really running, and one of my main platforms is Housing as a Human Right, because I've been a youth development for the last 20 years, and it still blows my mind when I say that because I'm really not that old. I'm very young, as you guys could all see. But I've been a youth development for the last 20 years, and one of the things that I've often seen is just how not having stable homes affects the family, right? Like, most of the young people in my district and the kids that I've served have lived in transitional housing. And that's a problem, right? We need to get to a place where everyone is having their fair share of housing. One of the things I often hear is, "We no longer want concentrations of poverty." And so, my response to that is, then we shouldn't have a concentrations of wealth. Because if you can say that we can't have, our communities have too much poverty in it, which is why they want to do, you know, have all these new developments, then my response to you is, then how do we then make sure that, in those communities that are a little bit more affluent, have affordable housing? So, I've been fighting for this for a very long time because I've seen how not having stable homes has affected children, have affected families, and it's important, right? Currently, we have a system that our city is a shelter system, right? I know countless families who've gone in shelters, and it just becomes a cycle. And they repeat that cycle, because even when they get out, they may get an apartment for a year or two, but then they can't, it's not sustainable because the rent isn't sustainable, so they end up right back in the shelter. So, one of my major platforms that I'm really pushing for is Housing as a Human Right. In my district specifically, we have, we have the most concentrations of homeless shelters in the city, right? We have the most students who are in transitional housing. So, for me, it is really about how do we make sure that we have families who have stable homes moving forward? Because stable homes also means you have a stable education. Stable homes also means that you also have working families who are stable, right? We have a lot of working-class people who are now in homeless shelters because they can't afford the rent. So, that is one of my major platforms that I'm really pushing for. And I mean, even the conversation I was having, my daughter, who's 21 years old, I know, oh my God, I'm a 21-year-old, right? I know. I just have to get myself up. No, I am a single mom, and I also was a teen mom, right? I had my daughter when I was 16 years old, and she's now 21. And one of the things she's been doing is trying to find an apartment in the city, and that's not possible. She has a good union job. She works for 1199 and all of these things, and she's still at a place where it's like, "I can't find an apartment," because she can't afford it. And so, it's unfair that, you know, we tell our kids to go to school, get their education, get their degrees, and we're setting them up for failure where they can't even get an apartment, let alone a house, right? Because we know generational wealth is about having land and these things. But we're not even at a place where we can talk about having generational wealth. We're at a place where we're talking about having affordable rent. So, my steps for me is, we're going to get this rent under control, and then we're going to talk about how are we going to have actual, actual plans that's going to get us from being renters to owners. So, that's who I am, and I look forward to having a more in-depth discussion.
Thank you so much. I'd love to hear from Jessica next, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you to Open New York and Bobby, thanks for hosting. It's good to see everybody. I just, before, I, Shawna, what you don't know, no one knows about me. So, I grew up on the Upper West Side, which we're going to talk about in a little bit, in Sarah's district. When I was three years old, my mother took me to Zbars. We went there all the time. We lived around the corner. And I grabbed the locks counter handle like this and let it go, and it smashed all over the place. So, my fingerprint on the Upper West Side is that the locks counter, no longer for 40 years, has the handle on the outside. So, little people that big don't. So, when you said that your mom worked at Zbars, I apologize for me. I didn't. I meant no, I meant no disrespect. My name is Jessica Haller. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I think that's exciting here. Not only that, I've lived on the one train my entire life, not on the train, but along the train. And that's actually a big part of my story. I'm a mom of four. I'm an entrepreneur by trade. And I am a climate advocate and activist. I walked out of a corporate career in 2006 to pursue a degree in public policy because in 2006, I was looking around and seeing inequities in the world, seeing things going on in the world, and a dichotomy that seemed false to me. I was hearing that we had to make a trade-off between owls and economy, right? Between environment and progress. And it did not sound, it did not sound to me that this was the way the world needed to be. So, I left corporate America, got a degree in public policy, and started working on climate and climate justice from that moment on. In January of this year, I launched a career, not a career, was it? It's not a career yet. I launched a campaign on a platform of resilience, sustainability, and equity. Because those are the three things that I think we need to make a great city. Sustainability is satisfying our needs without compromising the needs of the future. So, how we function today, we always have to keep the future in mind. Resilience is creating an opportunity for everybody to thrive, whether it's kids in school who get, who should be able to get a great education, no matter the color of their skin, the zip code they're born in, and situations surrounding them that they cannot control, or older adults having access to all the services that seem to get cut, you know, without, without anybody speaking up for them. And equity. Oh, no, did I do my resilience and my equity? I mixed them up. Resilience is our ability to withstand what's coming, what's coming our way. So, whether it's climate, the climate change, or a pandemic that we don't know is coming, or disruptions to our food systems, these things are coming at us, and we need to build resilient communities. And what are resilient communities? Resilient communities have different kinds of people living in them. They are rich because they are textured and layered, and there are different kinds of businesses, and there are different kinds of opportunities, and there are different kinds of social services, faith services, not-for-profit services, and that, you know, even entertainment, and those things are all together. And that's what makes resilient communities and the connection in between. So, I launched my campaign in January, and then we all ran headfirst into these crises of sustainability, resilience, and equity. And what I'm fighting for right now is the understanding that we need to, the way we need to invest in our communities to get us out of the economic crisis, undoing the racial, the systemic racism that were, that came, that bubbled up but was always there, addressing the climate crisis and making our communities resilient. Housing and the built environment are a huge part of that. They're a huge part of what our city is. We are our buildings. We are our physical, our physical space. My race right now, I am in the middle of a petitioning moment. I paused petitioning to hop on, to change my shirt and hop on this. In the middle of a pandemic, it's a special election. Our election is March 23rd, so we actually have a good opportunity to sort of get in and get to work really quickly. The other state in my race is I'm running against a machine. I'm running against the son of a 26-year incumbent state assemblyman. And, thank you, Casey. And it's, and what, what the machine means to me in the Bronx is more of the same. And we have to get smarter and more courageous about the decisions we're making about our built environment. And I think Open for moving in that direction. Thank you.
And finally, we'd like to hear from Sarah. Thank you so much.
Hey, everyone. So, it's hard to go last after those three amazing, amazing candidates. Especially, they said a lot of the things I would have said. So, I'll try not to repeat too much of what you all already know, too. But, so just to introduce myself a little more, I'm Sarah. My professional background is as an attorney. I practiced corporate law and also some immigration work. I, this is a little fun fact I'm starting to talk more about. I was a policy consultant for the CIA. I co-founded a nonprofit called The Empower Project that worked on right-wing extremism. So, I was very unsurprised by what happened yesterday. I've run several political campaigns in the city, and most recently, I served as the executive director for 21 and 21. I'm also a mom of two school-age kids. So, I've been doing a lot of stuff in the community as well. But, so, I'll just share like one experience that I think was pretty formative for me. When I was an attorney, I was practicing at SCADA, a big law firm. I represented, you know, billion-dollar mergers, things like that. Right after the financial crisis, I was working on a case with a mortgage-backed securities provider, trying to sort of sweep up whatever they could from the detritus of the financial crisis that they had created. And then, pro bono, I was representing asylum seekers who were coming here trying to, you know, make a better life for themselves, but were stuck in our convoluted immigration system. They couldn't work because they didn't have, you know, work permits, but they were struggling to live. And I just saw this inequality that was really striking and just really, I thought, unacceptable and not what I was, you know, I felt I had to do what I could to correct it. So, kind of similar to Jessica, I went back to school. I got a master's at Columbia in public policy, and I've been going down that road since then. And I think just, you know, broadly, again, it's kind of similar to what Jessica and everyone else said. I think we're facing, you know, people talk about the COVID crisis, but more deeply, we're facing, you know, the climate crisis, the crisis, the boiling, never-ending crisis of systemic racism in this country. We're facing a housing crisis in the city. So, you know, there's so many things that we have to do to correct these, and housing is a really key, obviously. Just getting people into stable homes, like Althea was talking about, is just so, you know, it's foundational to everything else. But it's also, you know, having more people living in dense urban environments is good for the climate. Having people, you know, opening up those high-opportunity neighborhoods to everyone, not creating these gated communities inside of our city is a good way to help address systemic racism. So, you know, all of these things are interconnected, and I think it's important that we talk about them that way. And I think we'll get into it a little bit more in the conversation. But for me, running to represent the Upper West Side, which is a more, you know, privileged neighborhood, it's interesting to me, the conversations that happen here at our community board meetings, you know, on Twitter. I'm sure many of you have seen it. You know, there is a level of privilege here in my district that it's important for me to, to tackle, to take on, and to say that we are not going to be a gated community. The Upper West Side needs to be accessible to everyone. We need affordable housing here. You know, it's an amazing neighborhood. I absolutely love it, and we'll talk more about this, too. But, you know, I came here as an adult. There, no, no drinking for me. I am not a lifelong New Yorker. But, you know, I absolutely love it. It's, it's the first place, I've moved around a lot in my life, and New York was the first place that ever felt like home and ever felt like I really belonged. And I want everyone to have that opportunity. So, we need to make sure our city is accessible and livable. And I'll leave it there. Thank you. Oh, I guess I'd just like a really quick update on the campaign, because that's the other thing I was going to say with Jessica, too. You know, I also am running against someone with a lot of name recognition and ability to, you know, just kind of walk into office. And I think I also am going to be, you know, not always getting as much institutional support as other candidates. So, I really appreciate your support, and we're definitely going to be going out there aggressively campaigning and building a grassroots campaign, you know, and just pulling out the vote from the people in this district who I think are ready for progressive, progressive change. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, all four of you, for kicking it off. You began to touch on some of your own personal stories. If you'll indulge me briefly, I'll actually bring up my own. I grew up on the edge of the Bronx and post-university, like a lot of young New Yorkers. I went to go live with my parents. Rent here is expensive. They have housing, so I did that. And eventually, in my first job, I was also going to graduate school and working full-time. My commute sometimes bordered on nearly three hours per day. And just completely physically and emotionally spent, I very much needed to move. I was lucky that I was introduced to two guys who had an empty rent-stabilized bedroom in their apartment in Manhattan, and I was able to move. It completely changed my physical well-being and mental well-being. And while my story is absolutely one of privilege, I think it's a story that a lot of us can relate to. Even, you know, no matter where you come from, if you face risk of eviction, if you have incredible, incredibly privileged upbringing, housing matters. Affordable housing is personal. And I know for every candidate here, they have their own personal stories, some of which we've touched on a little bit, that connect them to the policy motivations for why they're running. And so, I don't share my story to talk about myself, but because it's the theme of tonight's event, Connected Communities, how policies and land use choices and the way that communities themselves make decisions, how those have profound ripple effects throughout different neighborhoods in our city. And so, I wanted to connect the different communities, the different community council districts that are here with us tonight in the Bronx and Upper Manhattan, in part due to their proximity, to show us just how important it is to have housing policies that think about housing and economic development, not in silos, not in my block or my backyard, but holistically throughout the whole city. So, in order to do that, I will allow candidates to tell us a little bit more about their own stories and how it connects to their policies and their journey. And we'll start again with Shawna here.
Hey, sorry about that. I was on mute. Just as a backdrop, it's important to talk about, you know, the history in New York City, right? Resoning in low-income communities of colors, communities of color right now, it's, that's the focus right now. And we have to change that. There's been a lot of redlining that took place. For instance, East Harlem, East New York, and Jerome Avenue rezonings, these very communities were redlined for so many years, resulting in disinvestment, resulting in property owners choosing to not invest in their own properties. Meanwhile, we have, you know, wealthier communities, right? Like Soho, the Upper West Side, Riverdale, and Forest Hills, where they were left untouched because of exclusionary zoning policies, and that needs to change. And so, you know, one of the solutions we want to put forward is making sure that we're creating affordable housing in high-income areas, as we, as we spoke about earlier. And this would be critical, right, to increasing the diversity of our neighborhoods and access to employment, education, healthcare resources, some of the things that Althea was touching on. And I think we can do this through mixed-use development. One of the things that I want to make sure that we're championing is to address especially our city's homelessness crisis, that we build more affordable housing, which can be done by using the extremely low and low-income affordability term sheet, the L term sheet. And this is one way, for instance, to set aside projects for the formerly homeless, to set aside projects for families up to 80% of the AMI. There are ways to make sure that we're replicating these opportunities in wealthy neighborhoods, and I want to be a champion of that. And I also want to make sure that as part of these development projects that we're obviously going to succeed on, right? In high-opportunity neighborhoods, that as part of these projects, small housing developers like Wishfish or Cloth are part of this conversation. These are organizations that have been, and MWBEs, of course. They have a lot of experience managing mixed, mixed-use housing and also navigating the different constituencies. And it's just only fair that they're included as part of the RFP process and making sure that they're included as part of the HPD's RFP process. And so, I think that there are ways to really do in this, and we just have to make sure that we're having this conversation.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Next, we'll go on to Althea.
Well, I talked about it a little bit before, but I've been in youth development for the last 20 years. And me going into wanting to run for office really didn't come from me. It came from the young people that I've been serving. I have civic engagement workshops every year, and I had one about two years ago, and it was on like voting and what that looks like and how to be civically engaged. And I literally was in the midst of having a debate with my kids, and I'm like, "Guys, you have to vote. There's other ways you can be involved," and just really going through the gambit of like, "How do you be involved?" And just really trying to encourage them, and they're like, "Miss, stop." Like, no one cares about us, right? No one cares if we vote. Like, no one's ever asked us to vote. We're not part of that process. And they, and then I'm like, "That's not true. I care about you." I've always been here with you guys, and it was like, "Well, then maybe you should run." So, I literally had a group of like 16-year-old kids challenging me, like, "You're right. You do care about us. You do, you do take the time to explain stuff to us. You do, you have been educating us, which is why you should be in office." And so, it went from that, then I'm going to tell my friends, like, "I had this conversation with my kids. It's so crazy." And they're like, "Yeah, you should run." They're right. And so, you know, it was one of those things, and I don't know if you guys ever heard, especially for women and women of color specifically, it typically takes them to be asked seven times to run for office in order for them to even consider it, right? And so, I'm having this casual conversation, and people kept saying, "You should run. You should run. You should run." And my response was like, "I don't, I'm an advocate. I'm a youth developer. Those are not things that I do." And they're like, "That's why you should run." And so, that's how I got here, right? And, you know, after that, I went on a community tour. When I made the decision to actually run, I made the decision, I went on a community run tour, because for me, it was like, "How do I ensure that I am a reflection of the community?" I never want to be at a place where I'm making decisions in a silo. And so, even before I was an elected official, I said, "I gotta get insight and input from my community." So, I went around the community for about a couple of months, just talking to folks, like, "What are some issues you see?" Giving out surveys, you know, surveying people, talking to, you know, just being out there, because that's actually what I really love, being in the community. And that's how I built my platform, right? So, when I talk about Housing as a Human Right, that's because when I spoke to people in our community, that's what they talked about. They talked about rent being too high. They talked about, you know, living in a homeless shelter, right? And because my district is saturated with shelters, that is the conversation that kept coming up. So, it was like, "How do we create pathways to permitted housing, right?" I said this in an article, and I think, um, it was an article that I was in with Sarah, where I said, "My community has become a dumping ground for shelters, right?" Because you know why? When you go to the Upper East Side and you say you want to put low-income housing, or you say you want to put a shelter there, they do what? Just like they did a couple of months ago, they protest and say no. But then they'll come and sneak them into my community, and because my, I have parents, and I have families who are worried about being, you know, having a job, worried about making sure their kids are safe, they don't have time to go protest and say, "We don't want another shelter in our community." So, that's how I developed my platform, right? And on top of that, I also am a person, because I'm a youth developer, I understand why it's so important for us to have fundamental programs around youth education, right? If we're not investing in our kids, that means we're not investing in our future, right? Our job is to ensure that young people are positive, productive citizens when they become adults. But if there's no investment in the beginning, how are we going to stay in the end, like, they out here shooting, they all in gangs and all these things? That means that we failed them. So, for me, how do we invest in them? And that means having services like community centers, after-school program, workforce development. And we also need to bring back vocational schools and having vocational programs, because that's also going to help young people get out of poverty and get their families out of poverty. Also, we need to be partnering with unions, making sure that they have apprenticeships, and there's a pathway for, for jobs and workforce development, right? So, I don't want to take up so much because I could talk forever. But like I said, that's just a bit of how I came up with my story, and that's just really who I am. Like, at the heart of everything, I'm a youth developer. I'm a community member who loves her community and loves her people, and just will always just stand on the right side and fight for my community.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. I wanted to pass it on to Jessica.
Yeah, thank you. And I actually want to take my story all the way back to Althea's district. My grandparents met in James Monroe High School in the Bronx in the 1920s. Yeah, the late, early 30s. My grandmother was an immigrant. My grandfather had been born in Salt Lake City, Utah. And so, we, we, in a way, I come from the Bronx. But the story goes that my mother was raised just around Althea's district, and Robert Moses came and plopped down the Cross Bronx Expressway, which cut the community in half. So, my uncle, my great-uncle synagogue and the community were split by this highway, and the butcher shops closed, and the synagogue lost its membership, and they, they left to Lincoln Towers because the, the community was broken, and Lincoln Towers were new, were new buildings. So, we, we grew up on the Upper West Side. I mean, my, my grandparents were on 69th, we were on maybe 3rd. The family, there was a lot of family around. When I, when my husband and I were looking for a place to live, we couldn't, like, the viability of those neighborhoods, the changes were coming so fast. When my parents bought their apartment... When my parents bought their apartment in nineteen seventy-two, my grandmother was horrified that it was north of Seventy-second Street. Horrified, because it was on Eighty-third Street. The changes came so fast, and the appreciation and the real estate value and all this, it made it untenable. So we ended up back in the Bronx, where we love this community. And I want to explain to you guys something really interesting about the neighborhood that I live in. Someone mentioned Riverdale and the exclusionary, and then housing here. And then Althea mentioned the high density of homeless shelters. The district that I'm running to represent has both, because Wakefield has eleven homeless shelters in this fairly tiny neighborhood. They have eleven. I don't know if it's the highest. You guys have the highest. This must be the second highest, right? So Wakefield has that, but the other-
We got the title. We got the title. We got-
But we're pretty, eleven in a small neighborhood is like pretty darn close, right? But so what I see in this district, I see seven different neighborhoods that echo Dinkins' classification of New York City as a gorgeous mosaic. This district is a gorgeous mosaic. Each neighborhood has a completely different racial socioeconomic and needs makeup. It's like running seven different council races. And what I see as the main thread is equal or unequal distribution of resources. Some neighborhoods don't have enough green space, others border Van Portland Park. Some have eleven homeless shelters, others have none. You know, the question is, how do we make our city a place where resources, good resources and bad resources, right? Resources that we feel we need more of and resources that we don't want to have more around us are shared equally. Why is it that the Bronx in general has a disproportionate share of the infrastructure for the city, right? We're carrying the air pollution weight of the whole city, because it was all put in the Bronx. So that I take that very seriously, and that's part of the equity in my platform. And I think what we need to do here is take advocates like you on this very specific issue of housing and courageous politicians like these three fellows that are sitting up in this row of boxes with me, and put those together and move, if I can call it the Overton window, so that neighborhoods that we are going to try and break into or crack into are more and more and more ready, right? If this were a community meeting in maybe five of the seven neighborhoods I'm running in, I could say, you know, let's say I could win on, we're gonna pop affordable housing into these neighborhoods. If I say it too loudly outside my window, right, I have to say it to you, and I need your support. Because if I say it too loudly out my window right now, I can't win, right? We need to move the conversation into places to show people that this will make us a richer and a better and a stronger city.
Absolutely. And thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Finally, let's go with Sarah.
Thank you. I'm gonna try and tie a lot of these threads together. And I'm actually not gonna tell my story. I'm gonna tell my mother-in-law's story. So we ended up moving to New York. I came here because my husband, so my husband is a lifelong New Yorker, drink, born and raised here, partly on the Upper West Side. And so, you know, coming here was coming home for him, and we came to be close to his mother, who was aging. And about a year and a half ago, she's a little wacky, so take it with a grain of salt, but she, you know, she came to us talking about how she, you know, she wasn't sure where she was gonna be living. We had known that her living was a little insecure, but finally I was able to get it out of her that she was about to go to a homeless shelter. She was eighty years old at the time. She's eighty-one now. And she was like, it's okay. It's fine. It's fine. I can go to a homeless shelter. And I was like, that is not fine. That is completely unacceptable. My mother-in-law is not going to be living in a homeless shelter. Like, come here, you can stay with us. And she has been living with us since then, because we cannot find an affordable place for her to live. She has a fixed income. She's, you know, like I said, she's eighty-one now. She was an artist, and so she didn't have a lot. She didn't pay in much to Social Security, so she has very little money. And she makes, she has so little income, in fact, that she doesn't qualify for most affordable housing in this city. She makes too little income. So, you know, she shares a room with my seven-year-old son. It's just crazy. I mean, the city is unaffordable. And so I've seen it from that side. And, you know, we have to make it affordable for all ranges of people. So I have my kids here, and some kind of the stories that the other candidates were telling about growing up in one neighborhood and having to move to another. So I wonder what my kids will do as they grow up. And then we have our aging populations, which we have a lot of, especially on the Upper West Side, and they need to be able to find places to afford as well. And then let me tie in the homeless shelter stuff a little bit, because, you know, there are a lot of homeless shelters in my district. Maybe she could have found one here. I wasn't gonna let her live in them, but there are a lot of them. But not actually that many compared to, especially it sounds like Althea and Jessica's districts. But if you ask people in the neighborhood, they will say, oh, no, we have the most homeless shelters in the city. That's us. And it's not. I mean, verifiably, it's not. But, you know, every neighborhood feels like they have too many. So back to what Jessica was saying, I think this idea, I'm excited about this idea of comprehensive planning, because we need to be, you know, spreading out those things and making sure that where our shelters are placed makes sense and that it's not a political game every time. I've been, you know, dealing with the Lucerne situation in my district since the summer and just watching the nastiness that it evoked to have some homeless individuals coming into our district on an emergency basis. And the hate that it evoked in some people was really heartbreaking to me. And then we just found out today that they've proposed a permanent shelter in my district that would replace the Lucerne. The Lucerne is never meant to be permanent, but this would be a more permanent one. And already, you know, I mean, the news came out at two fifteen today, and already they're up in arms, they're planning, you know, to try to block it. And so it's just, you can't win, you know? I mean, we need, look, the system is not working. I think that we can all agree on that. I think Althea mentioned it earlier. Like, we have a homeless shelter system. We don't have a system that gets people into housing. So we've just been perpetuating homelessness for families, for individuals, for people who are struggling with, you know, mental health or addiction problems. This isn't working for anybody. And so I tell people in my neighborhood that don't want more shelters, like, yeah, I'm sure that people living in shelters also wish they weren't living in shelters. Like, this is not the ideal for anybody, okay? But if we want to solve this problem, we need more affordable housing in this city. The fact that we have thousands of children living in homeless shelters is just morally unacceptable, I believe, and we have to do better. So, you know, I start to get worked up, but it's really just, it's not acceptable. And, you know, if it takes comprehensive planning to get everyone in the city to do their part, then that's what we need. But every neighborhood has to do their part, including mine. So I'll leave with that.
Well, thank you so much for that. I think the sentiment is absolutely broadly shared across this event, so absolutely appropriate. I wanted to get into asking some questions of the candidates here to hear a little bit more about your platforms and solutions that you have proposed to help solve and mitigate the issues associated with the housing crisis. And what I'll do is I'll try and ask these questions to a particular individual, but I'll allow for some follow-up from other candidates if you have something to add. Given, you know, where we just left off, I wanted to ask Sarah specifically, how do you propose providing housing for currently unhoused individuals, housing that's safe, sustainable, and cost-effective?
Yeah, absolutely. So for those who don't know, I've proposed a rezoning in my district to build more housing, some of which would be deeply affordable, some of which would be supportive housing. I think this idea, again, that homelessness is just a problem we can't solve, is just false. Like, we have seen other places address this problem and largely solve it. We can end homelessness, okay? There's real strategies to make this happen, a lot of which is a housing-first model. Some of that housing needs to be supportive. I mean, everyone is ready for housing, but some people are gonna need, you know, services ongoing. That's fair. But shelters, where, as someone mentioned in the comments, you never know when you're gonna move. I mean, this whole battle for the men in the Lucerne, where, I mean, since July, they've never known if they're gonna be there next week, basically. I mean, we got this court ruling yesterday or the day before, I don't even know what day it is, after the coup, but we got the court ruling saying that they can stay probably at least until May. And honestly, that's the most security they've had in, I mean, who knows how long for some of them. You can't, you know, you can't start to rebuild your life without a stable home. It's just the most fundamental thing. So we need, you know, I'm sure many on this call are familiar with the economics of building affordable housing and the fact that it really works very well in neighborhoods like mine. So we have to step up and do that. I wanted to just quickly, if I can, address that. I saw a question in the comments about rent control. And I should have said that, too, it was part of my mother-in-law's story. I mean, my husband grew up in a rent-controlled apartment. And she, you know, at some point, she lost it, whatever. We have a really high concentration of rent-controlled apartments in my district. And it's true that there are some people living in those, you know, I have friends who live with their parents still, with their parents. Their parents mostly live out in the Hamptons or something, and they're gonna inherit the rent-controlled apartment. I think the problem is probably a little smaller than we think, but it's definitely not what it was for. So I'm attracted to the idea of means testing, but personally, I'm more in favor of vouchers and just more housing because there's so many people in my district who are stuck in these apartments. They can't move, because they can't find anywhere else that's affordable. But their landlord is trying to harass them out. The landlord never makes any improvements to the apartment. You know, it's almost hell living in them. So I don't think that just maintaining that system is working for anyone, and I think we have to get creative about finding other solutions.
Thank you so much. Are there other candidates who wanted to speak on this particular issue? Jessica?
I just want to remind all of us, I mean, the news that homelessness is such a multi, it's not a one thing. It's not one problem. LGBTQ teens from conservative backgrounds who get kicked out of their house and are homeless on the streets is a different problem than a working-class family that can't make it. I mean, these are like all sorts of, so again, it's like, it's a system. And we need to break it up and tackle it in different ways so that we can get there, you know, we get there at the end. And I think that that's so many of the questions that I've been getting as a new candidate. It's like, you know, there's like a famous Tom Udic story, like, tell me the whole tourist standing on one foot, you know? Like, hi, how are you gonna solve homelessness, right? Like, okay, so it's not that, right? Like, it's not, actually, it might be the same love your neighbor as thyself. That actually might be the right answer here. But it's many, many, many problems, and we have to invest in all the different services to fix it.
I have something to share as well. In my district, there's the opposite, in that families who are poor, right, and do not have the means, are being, you know, placed out of their rent-stabilized apartments through fraud in many instances, right? And they increase rents fraudulently. They claim MCIs or IAIs in the rent registration history. And in my experience as a tenant rights attorney, I think it's gonna be important that we expand rights of counsel to also include proactive actions as tenants, to be able to sue their landlords for fraudulent increases. And I bet you that if we invest in that, there are gonna be a lot of apartments that were deregulated entered back into regulation, help out so many families in our neighborhoods. To the point of housing vouchers that Sarah Lynn was mentioning, it's also gonna be very important that we increase the enforcement of the anti-discrimination of source of income. That's something that the housing vouchers, I know of a lot of folks who are being discriminated because of their housing vouchers. We have to make sure we increase the enforcement to make sure that landlords are actually carrying out their obligations when it comes to accepting folks with housing vouchers.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all those answers, and I wanted to call on Althea, not only if she wants to talk about housing for unhoused individuals, but she also mentioned you in your statement a little bit about comprehensive planning and about how burdens and privileges should be spread throughout the city, throughout wealthy and non-wealthy neighborhoods. City Council recently announced a comprehensive planning process for housing and economic development. I was curious, do you support this process? And tell us more, if on council, how you would either support this process or change it in any ways.
So I want to start with just talking about the homeless issue in our city and just thinking about, I feel like people make things much harder and difficult than it needs to be, right? It's not that hard. We have a lot of vacant apartments, right? It's not that hard, but we make things complicated, right? Where it's like, let's talk about the AMIs, we know people can't afford it, right? And I mean, prime example, in my district, the average income in my district is $26,000 a year, right? So if the average income in my neighborhood is $26,000 a year, and then you build affordable housing in my district, starting at $40,000 a year, how does that work, right? So for me, it's really just not that complicated, and we have to get to a place where we have to stop making everything so difficult, where it's like, you know, let's do what's right, like, what makes sense, right? Let's think about this. And one of my big pushes is about thinking about the AMI. How do we ensure that the AMI actually reflects the community that we're in, right? And so I was just on a call with, one of the Zoom calls with the community board, and they were talking about how they pretty much are building the Snoop Development or whatever. And so in an apartment out of two hundred and thirty-three units, there was only going to be five that was deeply affordable. Five. And then it was like, everything else would be moderate, and then a market rate. And I'm just like, well, then who are you building this for? Because you're not building this for me and the people in this community, right? And then it's always the pushback of like, well, you know, we trying to really not have concentrations of wealth, that same conversation again, right? But once again, if we are going to say that, then where do we want folks who are not making that money to go? What does that look like? Because we know what that looks like. It looks like having generations of people in an apartment, right? Like, I know young people and students who not only have their mother, their father, their grandmother, they got an aunt, an uncle, and this one and that one. And so, you know, we have people doubling up. And when we think about this pandemic and crisis that we're in, that's one of the reasons why we had such high death rates here in the Bronx, because you have generations living in the house, and they're all sitting on top of each other, right? So it's very important for us to think about it and stop making things just so complicated. Like, I mean, yes, there's some intricacies behind it, but at the end of the day, you cannot tell me that, like, when we think about real estate, like, oh, well, the developer has to make their money. Well, people have to live. So which one are we gonna choose? Tell me which one. Which one is more important, his profit or these people living on the street? And for too long, we said people living on the street just don't matter. We're gonna pretend it's not happening. And so for me, I'm gonna keep making sure that those people on the street do matter. And so that's where I'm at with like this homeless thing. Like, it just is what it is. We just gotta make, we gotta make it work. I'm sorry, what was your other question? I'm sorry. I'd be going on tangents.
No, no. And just watching the clock for everybody here. We are down, I guess, to our last ten minutes together. Time flies when everybody's having fun, and we've had, you know, so many questions that have already been answered by your incredible speeches tonight. But I was hoping you guys could talk a little bit about comprehensive planning. Brief answers appreciated, and hopefully we'll get in a couple more questions before the evening is over.
I'm all for it.
We appreciate a short answer. Support comprehensive planning? Let's do yes and no's.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. I have a question. Just, it seems very much one thing we struggle with at Open New York, I think, but I think that you all struggle with as candidates, is that there is a political narrative that frames development as counter to progressive ideas, and that makes it harder to build affordable housing, both through private means but public means as well. How do you think we can change this narrative? I don't know. Jessica, if you'd mind starting with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll go after Jessica.
This is sort of, this is the tension that I'm pulling on the whole time. Number one, sustainability also means business continuity, right? We need to build sustainable business models, and whether that's government funding, like, the models have to be sustainable so they don't bankrupt the city, the people, the tenants, the landlords, the small landlords, the big landlords. That's number one. Number two is progressive ideals, I mean, I believe and hope strongly are tied to climate resilience and addressing the climate crisis. Density is the answer to that. I live in a neighborhood where I have climate activists come to me and say, oh, are you gonna protect the single-family home on the corner? Because the developers are knocking them down and building homes. And I say, well, listen, you have a choice. You either have density, which is where we need to go on climate, or you have that little single-family home that's white and everyone's screaming because someone used to live there. Ooh, I don't know who that was. So we actually do need to balance. It's part of comprehensive planning. It's part of being courageous, but we need to look long-term. Say, if your goal is a progressive, it's true- Say, if your goal as a progressive is to address the climate crisis, we need to do that with density. And we need the developers to, the, the developers are the ones that are building the affordable housing units, even if the government is paying for it. So we need to do that. And the last thing, um, I, I'm gonna confess, I used this before I realized it was Open New York's, um, hashtag, which is YIMBY. Yes, in my backyard. The way we're gonna tie the knot between the progressives and this, and this movement is through YIMBY and saying, yes, in my backyard, I want those resilient and sustainable buildings. Yes, in my backyard, I want the change. Yes, in my backyard, I want this. You guys in Open New York have been saying that for a long time. I've been saying it in a different context, but I think that's, that's the way. And it's about, you know, showing everyone the vision and what we need to get there requires all of us at these community board meetings, on the block, in the corner, saying, yes, please.
Excellent. I know, Althea, you had an answer and then it looks like Sean.
It'll be very quickly. Um, I just, one of the things that I think for me, I've been making sure that I said is, every developer is not the devil. And I think that that, we're at a place where that's where the label has been. But part of the problem is developers are often the people coming in with the plan, right? But if we're not developing those plans, then we can't just say, that's a bad idea, right? So I think some of it has to do with, one, we need to educate our community about what this looks like and bringing them to be part of the conversation of developing the community that they want, right? And the community board is one of those places that starts. I've been going to a lot of the community boards in my district, right? And I will let you know, I go to these community board meetings and everybody vote on everything that comes in, every developer that comes in, they vote them right through. It's no question asked. And it's crazy to me, but that's part of the miseducation on their part, right? So I think it's important for us to make sure that we have community conversations about an elected official's responsibility, make sure that there's community conversations about development in their community, and then taking those ideas to developers, saying like, this is what we want and this is how we want it. But that's not the case. We're at a place where developers come to us with their plans and say, okay, this is what we decided and let's figure out how to make you fit in with your vision. But it, it has to become reversed. So I always say it all the time, every developer isn't the devil. Every developer isn't trying to force gentification. And I will also say, gentification is a bad thing, but we just have to learn how to make it work for us. Because I like nice restaurants in my community. I like nice housing. I like dog parks. Like, I, I like those things. So I want them here, but I want it to work for me. So, I'm sure.
Do you mind if I go? Because I was gonna say something that goes, it's like such a segue from that, is that I think that we have to, like, gentrification is bad when it causes displacement, displacement of people, displacement of culture, you know? These, it's, if we can bring it, bring the good without displacing people, I think people will be more comfortable with it. Um, so I think that if we center conversations around development that, that focus on the fact that we're conscious of displacement and we are going to protect people from displacement, and then sustainability as well. I think if we can bring in that progressive conversation around the environment and the climate crisis, that's really good. And I think we need to keep hammering home as well, this, the racial justice aspect of it, the history of housing, you know, uh, discrimination. And, and, yeah, it baffles me that it's a, that progressives can be against this, but Sean, I'll let you go.
Two, two quick points. Uh, I've spoken to Ben often about, you know, as we make investments in wealthy communities to create affordable housing for particularly low-income, um, low-income families, that we also don't forget that we have to continue investing in poor communities as well, right? To make sure that we are also reaping the, the fruits of, of certain, you know, projects and what have you. Second, uh, building affordable housing in wealthier neighborhoods also costs taxpayers less money. Uh, since the market units are priced higher, uh, there is more subsidy towards lower-income units. And this is gonna be especially vital since the city will have less, less subsidy to tap into during our city's current fiscal crisis. So something to consider. Uh, but again, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be with all of you here today. Uh, I will put in my information in the chat in case you need to reach me or my campaign manager. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for all of those answers. Um, definitely going to take some inspiration from all of you in future advocacy. Um, we're nearing the end. We're gonna end around eight oh five. Um, I'm just gonna ask four yes or no questions that, um, we've had candidates answer before for the Open New York endorsement process, but I wanted to make, uh, make sure we answered those, um, for the public. And then we will provide a few minutes for each candidate to let you know, um, if you like what you've heard tonight, to help, how you can help them out, whether that's through money, through petitioning assistance, through following them on social and web. Um, so what I'll do is I will start and we'll go a quick round robin on these four questions. The first, do you support the current so-ho-no-ho rezoning? Okay, looks like we've got all thumbs. Um, do you support an end or reform to member deference on new rezonings in council? Okay, we got it. All the yeses. Do you support, um, encouraging, uh, accessory dwelling units through zoning changes citywide? Um, those include like basement apartments and otherwise? And do you support a comprehensive planning process to cite homeless shelters around the city? Okay, we've got yeses all around. Probably not a surprise, given the organization and given the candidates, the comments we've heard tonight, but absolutely great to hear on the record. Um, thank you, candidates, so much for being here tonight and for sharing with us your vision for affordable and inclusive, um, New York City. I will, um, what I'll do is I'll leave it off, um, to each candidate. We'll pass it along. You can give us your, you know, your quick, um, pitch for whatever you need and we'll post some links, um, in the chat if people would like to, uh, take those down and follow up with action. Um, Sean, would you like to start?
Sorry, I didn't hear your last question.
Oh, the last question on, um, the comprehensive, it was this related to?
Like your pitch of what you need from people?
What's your biggest ask?
What's it need?
Yeah, whatever you need for your.
Well, look, we, we've, we've matched, we've maxed out in terms of, of fundraising. What we need is gonna be having soldiers on the ground, uh, who can help us spread our message of inclusive housing, uh, for, for our families and helping us, you know, do phone calls, do text banking, uh, knock on some doors, so, while socially distancing, uh, when that's permitted. And to just really help us out and get the message out. I think that's to be the best way possible. Uh, financially, we're fine, and I think that would be the best use of our, the, the, the best help to us. And thank you for, for giving me that opportunity, Bobby.
Oh, of course. Now, thank you for sharing and letting us know what you need. Um, Althea, let us, let us know what, how we can help.
Um, I'm still working to get full matching, so I'm about seven thousand dollars away to reach my full goal to be at full matching. I've been working really hard. Um, I won't lie, I've struggled really hard with asking people for money during a pandemic. Um, a lot of the people I know and friends have lost their job or been laid off, so it's been a real struggle. Most of my friends and people I know are teachers or youth developers and things like that. And so it's just been, they've given, right? They've given their ten dollars that's been able to be matched, but we, we are still, we're, we're about seven thousand dollars away from reaching full matching. Um, I'm the only one in my race that actually qualified for matching. Uh, I've also been picking up a whole lot of endorsements. Um, and I know Jessica and Sarah talked about it earlier, that they're running against machines. I was the candidate that no one took serious, right? So I came along and I was just this advocate who's been working with kids for the last twenty years and no one took me serious. No one answered my calls. I would go to events and no one talked to me. And I've worked hard to get to this place. Um, and so I'm at a place where I'm only seven thousand dollars away and I, and I'm gonna get there. You know, even if it's not for this matching, I'm gonna get there, but I also need help with, you know, when it's time for petitioning, right? I still need people to take me serious and understand that I'm gonna fight and I'm a fighter, right? Um, like I said before, I had my doing on hour sixteen and no one thought that I was gonna be able to graduate college. I was gonna be able to get a master's degree. None of those things seem possible, but I am a fighter and I work hard. So, uh, for me, it's all hands on decks. I need money, I need petition, I need phone banking, I need everything because I'm a, I'm a hard worker and I've realized, running for office, I cannot do this alone. So whatever support people can give, I'm, I'm here to take it.
Excellent. And we are here for you. Um, Jessica?
Thank you. And thank you already. I think William and some other people on this call have already signed up for petitioning. Um, the, uh, father of the guy I'm running against got into office in a special election that nobody's gonna show up to. Uh, so the notion, and the Bronx machine enabled the special election to happen. We're in the middle of petitioning in a pandemic. We're trying to, we are doing it safely. It is very hard. Um, we need help petitioning. Uh, there's a link, um, I think that Bobby just put in the chat for petitioning. We're going out Saturday, we're going out Sunday. Uh, phone banking, uh, because the election is in March. And the last thing I want to mention is this whole notion of the matching funds and the campaign finance board that we're all subject to. Um, while all of the candidates who qualified for funds, and I was one of them, got their funds in December, because I had a special election, we did not get our funds. And we're not getting our funds till the end of February. So I was someone who was really there with all, like, I did great fundraising and now I am in a tremendous hole because the CFP gives you less money. They give you about twenty-five thousand dollars less if you're running in a special and they delay it for, what is this, two months? Um, so sadly, I'm also in need of, uh, of donations, low-dollar donations, any kind, um, to carry us through, because again, this, this just benefits, um, the machine. We have a really fun team grassroots going, you can get on the one train and come up and that's where we're gonna meet on Sa- on Saturday. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much. And then finally, Sarah, let us know how we can help you.
Jessica, that's insane about the matching funds and not getting them. That's crazy. Uh, oh my gosh. Um, so we have maxed out matching funds, but just the way the spending works, um, we have another about thirty thousand to raise so that we can spend the full amount that you can spend because we spent the fifty-one thousand last year and then we want to spend the full one-ninety, uh, between now and the primary. So we're still fundraising, um, about thirty thousand more. So definitely donations are helpful. Um, we're doing our first phone bank on Sunday, so join us. We're gonna start calling voters. Like I said, this is gonna be a real grassroots campaign, so we're gonna need all hands on deck to just be voter contact all the time. Um, I tell the story that, you know, I, I love an underdog when I like walk into a room and my husband's watching sports teams that I don't know about. I'm like, which one, which team is favored? And then I just root for the other one. Um, so I, I like that I'm running from behind, kind of. It's kind of fun. Um, but it's also really challenging, obviously. So all help is really appreciated and go petition for Jessica and get some practice. And then you can come petition for the rest of us when the time comes.
Yes, it's great practice. Well, even the candidates, Sean Althea, it's good practice if you've never done it. I went and petitioned for Pamela in, um, in the twelfth when she was running. It was good practice.
Absolutely. Um, wonderful opportunities to both donate your time, your money and other resources. Um, and I think we'll be able to follow up with these links via email to anyone who registered if that's needed. But right now we have them in the chat. Um, thank you so much for, um, being here tonight. A reminder that the upcoming filing deadline for matching funds is January eleventh, so that's Monday. So no better time than present to donate. Um, the, uh, collection for petitioning in the special, uh, the deadline for that, I'm sure is also coming up. So no better time than the, this weekend, really, to take action if you like what you heard tonight. Um, thank you so much for coming out here on a Thursday night, um, during what has been a absolutely wild year so far. And I hope that everybody has a good one.